Start with pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Father Lord, we thank the God for this day. We thank the Father for the ones that gathered here tonight. And Father, we pray that each thing that we do would be done decently in order to glorify thy name, watch over us now, Lord, as we dismiss here. Have safety upon us, dear God, as we go back to our destinations and forgive our sins, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Item number two on the agenda will be public comments. No public comments. Move to item number three, the recognition.
Our recognition tonight is the Wayne County Band Program, and our band director, Mr. Andy Kreutz, is going to share some comments with us.
Okay, what does the band director say whenever there's a room full of band kids? All right, guys, get your instruments, let's go. Mister Dishman, board members, and distinguished attendees, it is my privilege to stand before you today publicly to recognize the students of the Wayne County Band Program. Every day, these students step into the band room, whether it be at the high school or at the middle school, with the understanding for that period, we'll be working from the moment rehearsal begins to the moment and after the bell, with little to absolutely no doubt. With that being said, it is my honor to stand before you, and even more importantly, you students and parents, to share with you how proud that I am of you and how thankful that I am for you. In an attempt to inform you of what these students have achieved in the last few months, KMA preview concert, KMA concert festival assessment, where all groups, grades six through high school, received a distinguished rating. The Winter Guard competed tri-state marching arts. They performed so well that they were actually promoted to the next class. The Cardinal Big Band had two concerts and a runout concert. Tuesday, the middle school students, we had what's called a middle school nursing home runout concert, where we went and performed for the nursing homes in the area. This morning, the sixth grade band and a few of our seventh grade students did a Monticello Elementary recruitment concerts. This, and then also, the high school 11 pet band games and performances this semester. Not to mention, the previous semester, the two concerts that these students did, seven marching competitions, four home football games, Veterans Parade, Christmas Parade, and the multitude of honors bands and ensembles that select students have elected to participate in. They do a lot. With that being said, will the students of the sixth grade band please stand up and be These guys have done six concerts this year. Okay, will the students of the seventh and eighth grade please stand up and be recognized? These guys have done five concerts this year. Will the students of the eighth and high school band percussion ensemble please stand up and be recognized? Three concerts this year. I want to also say, I've been, I've had the privilege of teaching music here for the last 15 years, and I want to publicly say that this year's concert assessment performance that they did, in my opinion, makes, was the best concert band that we've had here in the last 15 years. It just makes me extremely proud. Will the students of Winter Guard please stand to be recognized? These young ladies and gentlemen had eight public performances. Will the members of the Cardinal Big Band or Jazz Band please stand to be recognized? These guys had three concerts as well. What these students do and accomplish is absolutely incredible, and I'd like to restate how proud Mister Hayfley, Miss Bethany Hughes, and myself are of these fine young students and their accomplishments. I don't know if Miss Bethany is down here, but will Mister Hayfley please stand up? None of this is possible without the help of others, Mister Hayfley and Miss Bethany Hughes. I cannot express enough gratitude and appreciation for what these two teachers give to these students. We are extremely blessed and honored to have Mister Hayfley and Miss Beth involved with the band program. Will the parents tonight please stand up? To the parents that are here tonight, thank you for your support of the arts and of the Wayne County Band Program. You know, if you guys want something done, ask these folks, they know how to get it done. Parents, Miss Beth, Mister Hayfley, and I are very appreciative of all that you, of all the work that you do to support us, and I just want you to know publicly, we appreciate everything that you all do. In closing, just a little report, we have a leadership retreat scheduled for June 17th and 18th at Wayne County High School, and our band camp will start July 14th. Again, thank you all so very much for giving me the opportunity to recognize the accomplishments, the accomplishments of these young students in a public forum.
Thank you, Mister Kreutz, and thank you to all our band parents. It is a public meeting, obviously you're welcome to stay if you wish to, but if you would like to leave, now is our time of transition before we continue on with the meeting, so thank you. Okay, several things I'd like to share with the board tonight. First of all, just a reminder about some end of year events. This Sunday night at 6:00 PM is a baccalaureate service for the class of 2025. Mark Elton, the pastor of First Baptist Church, will be the speaker. There will also be a couple student speakers as well, I understand. Certainly, the board is invited and encouraged to participate in that service. And then the graduation ceremony will be next Friday, the 23rd, also at 6:00 PM in the gymnasium. Do you want to update you just briefly? We did have some damage from the hailstorm last Thursday. We were lucky in a sense that here on the main campus, it wasn't nearly as bad as it was just maybe a half mile away from here. Things were a lot worse, I think, over at Monticello than here on the, on the main campus. We have been working with Ken and Martin, been in contact with them over the last week. Mister Alley's put together a list of all the hail damaged vehicles that we have. We also had a couple roofs that we're gonna have an adjust or look at, so everything's in, in process on that. One thing I do want to share with the board is a bit of, I guess, disappointing news. We received a notification from White Associates, which is our firm that does our audit, our audit. They notified us last Friday that they have too many districts, they have too much workload, and that they were gonna drop us and not continue to be our auditor for the next year. The biggest issue with that is that the state requires that we have a contract for our audit by May 31st, so that did not leave us much time to search for a new audit firm. We have begun the RFP process that went out this week to some CPA firms across the area that do school audits. It will run in the Wayne Weekly next week. The deadline for proposals is May 27th, so this will necessitate us probably having a special call meeting sometime that last week of the month, possibly Tuesday, the 27th, or maybe Thursday, the 29th. We'll try to look at everybody's schedules, but we'll be in contact on that as we get closer.
But we have to have it in by May 31st.
May 31st is the statutory deadline, so they really kind of, they put us in a tough spot by not notifying us until, we actually had it on the agenda for this meeting to approve to continue that contract, and of course, then had to remove it, so. But we do have, Stephanie has gone to work on that, and we do have a lead on one firm that basically says they're overbooked, but they would take us on if we don't find somebody else. So, we do have at least one possibility, but we'll communicate about that as we get toward the end of the month. Also, in your packet, shared with you a flyer from KSBA, and you may have seen this in an email. KSBA is having a federal and state law update that will be held virtually on June the 3rd from 9:00 AM to noon. Obviously, I know that that's, can be difficult with work schedules, but we talked about this a little bit here, it would be beneficial for those that can participate. We can even do that as a work session if three or more of you are able to make that work, so if you want to let Brenda know by next Wednesday, if you think you would be able to attend, we can take care of all the registration, and then like I said, we can, we can set it up as a, as a board work session where we can get together and do this together, and hopefully John will be able to be here with us for, for that as well. So, again, let Brenda know by next Wednesday on that. The last thing I want to share under superintendent's report, this past Monday, a group of area superintendents met with Congressman Hal Rogers to discuss federal education funding. Obviously, this is something that the board's been aware of for a while, the discussion that's going on around that and around the federal budget, and of course, Congress is in the process of trying to pass that budget reconciliation bill, and I say trying, it's gonna be a very difficult thing for them to do, particularly with the slim majority that the Republican side has. Some good news that has kind of come out since the last time we talked about this, it appears that the cuts to Title I and IDEA that were kind of initially being batted around, it appears those are off the table at this point, which is good because those are the two largest pots of federal money that we've received. We're still unsure about Title II, III, and IV. Those are much smaller pots of money, so it would not be a devastating blow. Title II would, would be a little tough to absorb, but it's nothing that we can't overcome if that were to be cut. The bad news, and again, you've probably seen this in the news this week, is that it seems to be a big emphasis in this bill is on cuts to Medicaid, and of course, what they're saying is that they want to address fraud and waste and abuse, and I think everyone is okay with the notion of cutting out fraud, but it's always sort of uncertain exactly what that will translate to in the end. So just to give you an idea, we bill for Medicaid services for kids that need a health aid, get therapy or whatever if they are Medicaid eligible. Our Medicaid reimbursement as a district to this point in the school year is $275,000. That comes back into the general fund, and that's used pretty much entirely to pay for those staff that provide those services. So again, any cut to that would cause us to have to, you know, adjust budget-wise, so that's something that does appear to be on the table. There's also a move to include something called the Educational Choice for Children Act, or ECCA, as part of this reconciliation bill. This is basically, has, as the ECCA was originally proposed, it's basically universal private school vouchers with very little, if any, restrictions. Now, the odds that that survives into the final version of the bill, I think, are probably pretty slim, but that is something that probably will come up during this process. So Congressman Rogers was, was very attentive to the concerns that superintendents raised. He emphasized, first of all, patience, you know, how, he just talked to us about the fact that this is a lengthy process, it's a very difficult process, and that we need to be patient, and then he just reminded us that, you know, the president can propose lots of things and throw lots of things out into the air, but ultimately, Congress is the one that appropriate funds. So appreciated the opportunity to meet with him, and that he took his time to do that. So that's just kind of an update on where things are at, so the picture's becoming a little clearer. There's, there's a kind of mixed news, there's some good news about Title I and IDEA, but some other things that we're still uncertain about, and as this reconciliation process rolls on, we'll, we'll have more information about that to share as we go forward.
All right, that's it. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Other than what he elaborated on?
Item number five, approval to accept assistance from the School Facilities Construction Commission in the amount of $248,925 to fund, I guess, a high school ATC safety corridor project.
This is the grant that I shared with you last month that we had received, we just have to make a formal motion to accept that money. Recommend that we approve.
You may want to move, make a motion for?
I'll make a motion to accept assistance from the School Facilities Construction Commission in the amount of $248,925 for the high school and the ATC safety corridor project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Approval of the 25-26 salary schedules.
Stephanie, some things you want to share?
I'm just gonna go over some of the changes we made in the salary schedules. The athletic committee met, and they had proposed adding additional assistant coach for both boys and girls basketball teams, to add an associate head coach stop-in of $1,500 for the high school football team, increase the band's mileage allotment to $4,500, also added a musical arrangement design stop-in for the band for 2000, increased esports supply and equipment budget to $2,850, added a program head stop-in for middle school boys and girls basketball and football, added a sixth grade football team and restructure the middle school football coaches' salaries after the middle school basketball team, add an assistant coach to both Bell and Monticello's junior pro programs, and we added a Monticello dance team program. Those were the things that the athletic committee proposed to change on the salary schedules. The certified salary schedule, all certified staff will receive a 2% pay increase, with the exception that the extra duty stop-ins do not change, they'll remain the same as they are this year. Classified staff, if you all remember last year, we touched certain groups and increased them on the front end, making them a higher increase on the front, and as they went down, they progressed to 2%. We didn't get all the groups touched last year, so this year, we wanted to touch the groups that we didn't get touched last year. So bus monitors and alternative program instructors, they received an 8% pay increase on the front end, progressing down to a 2. Bus monitors and, or sorry, admin twos receive a 3% front end raise, and that progresses down to a 2%, and admin three received a 7% raise on the front end, progresses down to a 2. Transportation, this year currently, they had multiple components that you had to look at to figure out what their rate of pay was going to be, so we restructured that or transportation did to an hourly rate, so that it's more easier to look at and stuff, so we've changed that also. Raises were not applied to coaches or substitute teachers, and outside of general fund, cooks received a six-end raise on the front end that progresses down to a 4, and food service received 5 that progresses down to a 4. Questions?
Any questions?
Just a couple things I might add. On the extra duty salary schedule, I did propose one new certified admin position, a community schools director. This is a, the full-service community approach is something that the Pritchard Committee is, is kind of advocating for in our state, that basically talks about a pipeline of services from early childhood all the way through workforce readiness, and really, there's an emphasis on parent and family engagement and strengthening also community ties. One of the things I've shared with some folks over the last couple days is that we have about 300 kids in Wayne County that are on homeschool. Now, that counts the folks that attend Emmanuel and the Naz, the school at the Church of the Naz Ring, and also the kids that are at the Menonah School. So probably of those 300, about 200 are on homeschool, and I would really like for us to, to make a push, to make some relationships with those families and build some bridges to try to get some of those kids back in school. Some of them, I'm sure, are getting a good education in their homeschool environment, but many are not. Kentucky has one of the lowest thresholds for homeschool in the country, and so that's something that I visualize being a priority for this position, should you approve it. We have some federal funds that are earmarked for parent and family engagement that we can use to pay for about half of this salary, and if we could get 10 kids back from homeschool as a result of this work, we could pay for the other half. So this is something that I think, think is important, that I want to be a focus area is just making sure our parents and families are truly engaged in school and that we're giving from them and providing them with, with what they need, so I did, did have that on there. And then the other thing I wanted to say really quickly about this is, when you think about the, the 2% raise, but that, that was basically our base number that we worked off of, obviously, we would like to do more, but here's the situation that we're kind of in at this stage. Our AADA is about 50 kids less today than it was one year ago. Lucky for us, the General Assembly did increase the seat base in this budget, seat base goes up $260 a child next year. So we still will have some new seat funding, somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000, depending exactly how the property assessment works out in the end. But you know, that 50 kids, that's another $229,000 that we would have had if those kids were still in the seat. So, you know, again, it plays into this homeschool conversation about bringing kids back in and trying to reconnect with some of those families. So we just felt that, given the new seat funds we were gonna have available, given the fact that we're still uncertain about some of the federal funds that we might receive, that 2% was the fiscally responsible thing to do. We don't want to overextend, you know, this would be four consecutive years, I think, that certified staff received 2%. So that was the, the thought process behind that.
Somebody want to make a motion to move, approve the 25-26 salary schedule?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any votes?
Approval of the, of the 2025-2026 tentative budget.
Okay, so the tentative budget, budget has each school's general fund, fund stacking allocations, and the supply budget's built in, it has transportation, maintenance, and ground supply budget, has all the payroll budgets for all of our employees that are paid through the general fund. It does include a seat funding increase that Mister Dishman just talked about, and the 2% raise and other salary schedule changes I just talked about. Estimated cost for just giving the 2% raise was $375,000, that's part of this budget, and the total general fund budget for next year is $25.9 million. The contingency built in is $962,350, and that's 3.7% of our budget.
Anybody make a motion to approve 25-26 tentative budget?
I make motion to approve the 25-26 tentative budget.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Discuss a potential approval of an instructional monitor for the ATC. I guess that you, Mister Kenny.
Well, we started this two years ago with a grant, and instead of, instead of stressing the district a little bit more and, and trying to steal one of your special ed teachers, we went out and got three retired teachers to come in and, and fill the position of the grant, and this is, I asked Noel, Mister Vaughn, he was, he's, he was the special ed guy that had the certification who came, who started it, and I asked him just to put me a little something together, and he said, and this is his words, "Our second year of having a special ed liaison since the ATC has been quite successful, and before, our program is operated with the use of three retired teachers who work part-time, go into two days, maybe even three days a week, when, when they were needed, they could just, you know, when they, when they knew things were bad, you know, the, the kids needed help, then they would come in a little more." Last October, this would have been October 23, when the program started and they got, really got to, got into it, they had 22 of our students failing 26 different classes, that's just technical classes at the ATC. So they started and, and they identified their, their target, and then they just started working with them, started pulling them and just pulling, pulling grades up and, and working with those kids. Last year, they finished the school year, zero kids with IAPs failed a class at the ATC, and there were several students that they helped earn their industry certifications and passed ELPs and those things, and, and you know, those things directly affect Wayne County High School as part of the, you know, the part of the post-secondary readiness standards. This year, they just did the same thing. We got started a little earlier, so they didn't have a deficit to, to fight out of. Basically, they said that, you know, comments were, they tend to slip a little bit when they had NTI days, you know, kids don't do their work on NTI days, surprise, surprise. Those students, you know, they'd pull them and refuse, and receive additional tutoring till they went back to passing. As of May 6, and I think as of- As of May 6, and I think as of, as of yesterday, I spoke with Noel, and they're not expecting to come back, zero students with IAPs will fail a class at the ATC. They expanded it. So they started seeing the need that our limited English speakers were needing a little bit of help, so they started working with those kids. Don't have any data on that, because we just didn't pull data on those kids. They went, just, you know, regular kids, you know, regular ed kids, if they were struggling out of class, hadn't needed to make up a few grades, they started pulling them. And finally, believe it or not, they, Noel would look at their overall grades, and if they saw a kid that maybe had an F in English, they would go and try to help them get that grade caught up. So this program really, really, really has helped students at the ATC and at the high school overall. And you know, I come to you today, Mr. Vaughn and Ms. Hitz and Mr. Kennett have said that they would do it one more year, but they're kind of ready to, they're retired, and they're kind of ready to be retired. I was wondering if, you know, looking at the possibility of a paraprofessional, a full-time person, just, it would be a great asset to the ATC and to the high school teachers that are at the ATC. This just isn't my staff that uses them, this is Mr. Horton, Ms. Lawrence, Ms. Hoover, and Computer Science. So you know, your four teachers also use these folks. And I'm just coming to you to see if maybe we could continue this program with a full-time person. I think Stephanie was, want to kind of see what a full-time person would run.
I'll add two numbers. If you put a brand-new A into that spot, you're looking at $20,500 for like fringe in salary. If we put someone that had maybe like 15 years on down the road under her wall, that would be a salary of $25,024.
So, and you know, one thing, and I would have to talk to somebody about certification, this might be a person that might need to be, at least have qualifications of a substitute. Is that an associate's degree or just 30 hours now?
Actually, now it's just a high school diploma.
It's a high, okay. Because there will be times that this person will be, you know, in a classroom, you know, and maybe in a classroom as, you know, as the teacher. So I would think it would be somebody that would need to be, and I don't know if that changes anything on the pay scale or not.
So we'll have to open this up to the public and take applications and...
Yes, yes, it should be attended, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have, you know, I have, you know, I've not said that this is a thing that's going to happen, you know, no predisposition ideas what you all would like to do.
Otherwise, you don't have a grant to fund it next year.
No, no, that's... The grant that we got a couple of years ago, that was a one-time deal and...
I think we need to look for somebody that's duly qualified to fill that role, I mean...
It'll have to be somebody that's...
Somebody's got a little educational background or something.
Self-motivated, if they're self-motivated, you know, in...
Maybe a more technical background.
Take some instruction and... We're basically just taking students, giving them a place to work, and offering a little bit of, it doesn't have to be an auto mechanic, you know, somebody with years of experience, just somebody that basically likes to work with kids, is willing to jump in there and do the research and do what's expected. It may be a, you know, it may also be somebody that, if Sheila has to be gone for an afternoon to train, may answer the phone that afternoon. If, you know, Micah and those folks covered a class every once in a while, went on a field trip every once in a while. So they were a very good, kind of a relief out for us, so. If y'all have any questions, I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
I think if you think it's working, I think we probably, I mean, we can invest, you know, what Stephanie said, and, you know, it'll be worth it, it's worth it. If we don't have any failing grades, that's a small price to pay.
Yeah, if you would have told me, you know, three years ago, when I just threw my name into that first grant, that, you know, students with IAPs were struggling like they were, and I don't think they were before COVID. And, you know, when we were over here, we were kind of like an island, and where over there, you know, our culture has changed a little bit, you know, it's still positive, but it's just a little bit different. And we've got more students since we're over there too.
They're like a positive thing to do.
I think, well, I guess we'll have to change this item of agenda for approval of an instructional monitor for the ATC. If someone would like to move, make that motion for approval of an instructional monitor for the ATC, we'll move on.
I make the motion that we start the process of finding an instructional monitor for the ATC? I second it.
All in favor?
Thank you very much, I think that's money well spent. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Kennett.
Thank you, Mr. Kennett.
Good job, man.
Approval of the Monticello Banking Company Depository Bond for the 25-26 school year. Stephanie, you got anything to say about that or...
You know, it's usually just an approval, where they have insurance on a money.
All right. Need a motion to approve the Monticello Bank Banking Company Depository Bond for 25-26 school year.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Approval of pay request number 11 for the Wayne County Bell Elementary HBAC project, BG 23-333, in the amount of $530,758.13.
I would add to that, that this project is almost completely closed out. We think there's one small bill for an electrical contractor, is that correct, Stephanie?
I hadn't heard that, so I don't know.
Well, I think there may be one, one very small bill, like less than $1,000, if you look at the percentages that are on there. And I want to say, I want to give credit to Cogell, there was a little bit of struggle with one of the contractors, and they worked really hard at making sure that everything was correct and provided us with a ton of very detailed documentation so that we could be assured that it was.
I thought we'd close this that long?
Well, probably, this is drug on, I think, because of that particular situation, longer than it should have. So there may be one more small little bill, but hopefully very soon we'll be able to BG four and close this thing completely out. So I recommend we approve it.
We have a motion to approve the invoice for the BG 23-333, in the amount of $530,758.13.
I make the motion to approve it.
We have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Approval to pay an invoice to Lynn Imaging for a blueprint in the amount of $331.80 for the Wayne County School Walker's Learning Project Center, or Center Project. Make a motion to approve, pay that invoice to Lynn Imaging for a blueprint, in the amount of $331.80.
It'll be paid, I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Approval of capital funds request in the amount of $10,290 to D-C Elevator for the Wayne County High School Elevators repairs. I didn't know it was a door up.
This was just some maintenance that had to be done, and we do the capital funds request basically to reimburse the general fund for that cost.
Okay. Get a motion to approve, item number 12.
Make motion to approve capital funds request in the amount of $10,290 DC elevator for the high school elevator repair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Approval and potential discussion and potential approval to pursue projects to be paid for by capital fund, request of building funds in the Wayne County Middle School intercom upgrade, replacement of floor tiles in two classrooms at Bell Elementary, asbestos abatement and replacement of floor tiles in the Wayne County High School gymnasium lobby, two hallways, and the two old tech rooms.
Just a couple of things here, I mean, obviously, this is something we've done a couple of times now over the last few months, where we've considered some maintenance upgrades that we wanted to do and asked the board to consider making a capital funds request to pay for those. Again, that saves money in the general fund, we can move money from building funds to do these things. The intercom system at the middle school, they have a need next year with their changing schedule to be able to set up different zones of the building for bells, different bell schedules. Valerie, you want to share what you shared with me a minute ago, just to... This one is not necessarily a have-to-be-done kind of thing, so...
This doesn't have to be done right this minute, replacing the whole intercom system. The intercom system in the middle school is 27 years old now, I think, and this whole school year, we've experienced outages in certain areas of the building. Right at this moment, everything is working, but it's kind of, it's kind of like fighting fire. You just never know, first thing in the morning, the phone rings, and one whole wing of the middle school might have no intercom, which is obviously a safety concern. So like I said, right now, we do not have to replace this whole intercom system, but to do what Mr. Patton and the teachers over there want to do next year, they want to change up the way the kids move between classes. Some classes, they're going to stay in a little longer, there's going to be different areas of the building that'll need a bell change, just all over the building. Right now, we can do five zones at the middle school, and that's what we have set up now, upstairs, downstairs for each grade, whatever. But we're going to need to double that to do what they want to do with this new schedule they're going to have next year. We're going to need to have about 10 zones of bells ringing just different times. We cannot do that without upgrading this somewhat. We estimate between $5,000 and $8,000 to do what they want to do. So the question is, do we spend that much money on an old system that may or may not last the next school year? I just, you know, I don't know when it's going to die, but it's beginning to act up, and it's being very hateful.
What's the cost of the whole?
So the whole thing is, the price I got this week to replace the whole system will be about $50,000. And that's us doing it ourselves, of course, we save the district that much money, doing it all in-house. But, you know, $8,000 to piece it together and hope we last, or $50,000 to replace it. And like I said, it does not have to be done right this minute today. Like, it's working today, and we're going to get through the year, so, you know, I don't know. It's just something to consider, some, a lot of our technology in these buildings is getting pretty old. There's a lot of things that are beginning to act up and get a lot of use and a lot of years on them, so.
With the new system, how long it took to end?
It won't take us that long, actually. In the intercom system that we, that the $50,000 will be just like the new one at the ATC, where we can have zones, it's all computerized more than what this one is. I could have a zone in every room of the building, if that's what we needed. It's much more modern system, things have changed a lot in 27 years. So, you know, I don't know, it's just something that's coming, and it's going to come to all the buildings eventually, a lot of this stuff has been there a long time. So it's, you know, kick it on down the can, and I'll come to you at Christmas maybe, or, you know, just, we'll just, don't know.
We approve all this, I mean, it's not set in stone that that's what happens, I don't guess, which is not itemized to what...
Yeah.
I say, I'll make a motion for item number 13 to be approved, and when you come back with the...
I can get an exact...
What you feel like we need to do, we'll move forward on it or whatever.
And I don't think I answered Tony's question on how long. I don't think it would take us, we've got a lot going on this summer, but it's not a huge project, it would not be a huge project.
That would be my concern, if it would run into bells, door locks, I mean, I think that's more crucial, we need that done.
Bell, and now the ATC doors are part of this grant that you all accepted tonight, so...
So we need that, we need that done before this is done.
That's on our plate too, but I don't think this will be a huge time project for us. The wires are, you know, there's a lot of stuff on it.
You can reuse the wiring and stuff, just like your CPU boards and stuff need to be changed out?
It'll be speakers in the room mostly, there might be some wiring, but it will not be a huge pull on us to do this.
I make a motion to approve item number 13 and...
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Approval to continue a contract with Upchurch Insurance Financial Services, Inc. Energy Insurance Agency, has agent record of property, equipment liability, auto, and workers compensation insurance for 25-26 school year.
Ken Martin, do you have anything you want to share?
Be happy to. All I'm going to do is do a very brief recap before I sit down anyway, gentlemen, Mr. Dishman, board members, thank you very much for giving this opportunity. We really appreciate you guys being community-minded and dealing with a local agent. And there's two graduates from Wayne County High School here, Ken and myself, and then another graduate from Wayne County High School that we've worked very closely with, Brock Corrider in Lexington, who's tied with this same for concession with us, we're partners, and that's, that's a, much appreciated from us that you guys are that community-minded. Anyway, in your hands, you have lost runs for the Liberty Mutual. I'm not going to spend but a couple of minutes on that. You've had a good year this year so far, and hell, we just had last week, we don't know where that's going. Looking back, I've got three years of lost runs there, and there's actually two that are still open, haven't been closed. One of them goes back to June of '24. And that one right now, if I hit this right up in front of me, it's like, claim was $81,000. And there has been, it's still open, so they don't really know what's going in, but other than that, there's a windshield claim open, and, you know, like I said, you've had a good year this year, and I'll be helping them develop all the rates, of course. Not going to spend any more time on that, unless somebody's got a question. Okay. In your hands, you've also got one more sheet, this right single sheet, it has to do with your workers' compensation. This is where we're not shining real good. I've got a living year runs here for the school board, starting in 7/1/13 all the way through, actually, April of, I think it's April of 15th or something like that, of this year. If you'll notice down through there, look at the first column, in that period of time, we had 325 claims, and the incurred amount of the claim equal $807,987. Getting pretty large. Now, paid, the amount that is paid showing in that period of time is $667,000. However, they're still in reserve that could very well have to be paid, they're holding another $140,000. And the most of that comes from a claim that occurred in 2018-19 policy period and 2022-23 policy period. 2022-23 was $170,000 actually incurred, holding, and they've only paid $31,000, still holding $139 in reserve. Gets a little complicated, gets a little hairy, I kept thinking, boy, we got a good run on work comp for the last, for the last few years before 2023, and it wasn't bad, you can look up there and see, and then all of a sudden, we got hit hard twice. So anyway, any questions on that? That's kind of a recap of what the insurance company is doing for you. on that? That's kind of a recap of what the insurance company is doing for you. You never know when, when a claim is going to hit. It could be a million dollar claim, but that's where you can hide your eyes. Any questions?
Question?
Yes. Okay. All right. I appreciate you very much.
Motion to approve the contract with Upchurch Insurance.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor? Approval memorandum agreement with the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, Education, and Labor Academy for the Community Work Transition Program, item number 15.
This is a grant that provides funds for a position that, that services kids, that gives them opportunities to go out and do some work while they're still students. So recommend we approve.
Motion to approve memorandum agreement with the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, Education, and Labor Academy for the Community Work Transition Program.
This is kind of what we call the co-op program?
This, this one is, is very similar to co-op, except that it is specific to students with special needs.
Okay. So then I make a motion?
My second. All in favor? Approval to award a contract with Smart Systems for sanitation services and cleaning supplies for child nutrition department for the school year 25, 26. Casey, you?
This was sent out, um, 30 days ago with the doctor in the car. He's received one, one bid on it from Smart System. It's a current, current system we're already using. They come out, all their chemicals, and they come to do a service for us. They check their dishwasher, shit, and all of that. We're just, uh, trying to, uh, we did that contract with them.
I make a motion to approve item number 16.
I make motion to approve item number 16. Second.
All in favor? Item number 17, approval, approval to salvage six buses and one SUV, one 2005 John Deere 2653A field mower. And that's it for that. There's all these salvage items, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Salvage? I make a motion to approve the salvage six buses, one SUV, and a 2005 John Deere 2653A field mower. If I could give you a second?
I'll say.
All in favor? Item number 18, approval to surplus a 1974 International 354 tractor, 2003 Williams. I guess that Scotsman double wide office trailer, four household ovens. Need a motion to approve number 18, surplus those items. They just didn't say anything about them? Are you going to seal bids or?
I have not talked to, that's typically what?
That's what we've done.
What we've done in the past. But we hadn't talked about that directly. So I do know this is the old trailer that's over there by the old preschool building. Looks pretty rough. Everybody would be glad to see it gone, I think.
And tractor, and I know in that meeting we had their, a couple of Fridays ago, he said the ovens were all functional. They were just switching out for newer versions or something.
In the home ec room, and they were pulling those out.
Yeah, so.
There's this tractor at work at the high school, I mean, Monticello?
That, I think that's the only used, tried to use at the bus garage, from what I understand. So?
I make motion to surplus.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Consent agenda, item number 19. Approval of school principal's budget for the 25, 26 school year. Approval of contract with Christianson Gage on track orientation and mobility LSE for orientation and mobility services. Approval of facilities request for the Wayne County High School cafeteria on September 27, '25 for the Carter family reunion. Approval of facilities request for the Wayne County High School Pickrell Auditorium for Sunday morning, 6:01, '25. And then again, I guess?
It's, it's actually from June the 1st.
June the 1st through June?
Through August the 10th. And what it is, Mount Pleasant Fellowship Church is, their church is undergoing a renovation. They wouldn't be able to have services in their building during that time. So they're requesting to have their Sunday morning services in the auditorium.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, approval of the claims and wages, approval of trade support, approval of high school volleyball team to travel to Superior Bowl, Tennessee on September the 12th and 13th, 2025, for a Rocky Top class.
Make a motion be approved. Consent agenda, item 19A through 19H.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? And motion to adjourn.
You don't make a motion. Second.
All in favor?